I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As required by section eighty-four dash one four one two subsection eight of the Nebraska statutes, notice is hereby given that a copy of the open meetings act is posted for your examination on the wall inside the door to the civic, uh, city council chambers. Uh, before we have rule call, I'd like to welcome all our guests tonight, a nice crowd here. We have rule call, please.
George Klein.
Here.
Miles Bannon.
Present.
Mark Graves.
Here.
Shane Shepherd.
Here.
Joe John Drew, absent.
Do we get a motion for approval of the agenda?
Klein.
Yes.
Bannon.
Yes.
Graves. Shepherd.
Yes.
Okay, can I have, get a motion for approval of the agenda?
I made motion to approve of the consent agenda.
Second that. Question by Shane, seconded by Mark, approve the consent agenda. Consent agenda consists of minutes of the city council meeting from August nineteenth. Uh, behind the correspondence tab is a copy of a letter addressed to the mayor and the city council from the Institute of Justice. Uh, the letter concerns city governments, um, imposition of fees on food truck owners. For general information, no action needed. Um, there are no minutes from other boards and commissions. Special designated licenses that were administratively approved. Ridge for Shatteren State College rodeo fundraiser, appeared around September sixth and seventh. And an application for the ridge for Shatteren State College rodeo fundraiser. Um, I think this is, yeah, is approved. Item B on the agenda is ordinance number fourteen thirty-nine. Um, ordinance number fourteen thirty-nine is before the council for its third and final reading. Please read ordinance number fourteen thirty-nine by title.
An ordinance to establish the amount of certain fees and taxes charged by the city of Shatteren for various services, including but not limited to building in use, zoning, library, occupation licensing and pet licensing, water, sewer and drainage systems and facilities of the city for residential users and commercial users, including industrial users of the city of Shatteren for the twenty twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five fiscal year to provide for the repeal of conflicting ordinances to provide for an effective date.
I move that ordinance number fourteen thirty-nine be approved on its third and final reading. Second that.
Miles, seconded by Shane, approve for ordinance number fourteen thirty-nine as third and final reading. Um, discussion wise, since we have a nice crowd here, I think maybe we ought to go over the changes that, uh, that mean that what the ordinance number fourteen thirty-nine is. Ordinance number fourteen thirty-nine, as noted, was the set fees that the city charges for various items. Um, one important thing was LB six eighty-five recently passed by the state legislature, which should affect July nineteenth of this year. Legislative bill prohibits the city from levying or imposing any tax on any mechanical amusement devices. Um, for this reason, the fees are taken out of the ordinance and that's been added. Other changes that are noted, carousel hangers, was a hundred and thirty dollars a month. It was a hundred and fifteen dollars a month. All candy, you know, fifteen dollars a day, sixteen dollars per day. And all the courses probably didn't note, the aquatic standard, there's been no changes in those fees. Interest to a lot of constituents in the city of Shatteren. Uh, moving a body inside the container, it was three thousand dollars, three thousand back to hundred dollars. Moving a body outside of the container, it was five hundred dollars to a thousand dollars. The solicitors' fees, they were annual of two hundred dollars, that went to two fifty. Per week of fifty dollars, went to a hundred and per day twenty dollars, went to fifty dollars. And those same amounts of interest rates applied to mobile food vendors, the annual two fifty, per week a hundred dollars, or per day of fifty dollars. Credit card transactions had been only imposed on utility bills and now it's going to recharge two and a half percent on all, all uses of credit card. Um, franchise fee, um, for electricity, going from public access to grocery, grocery revenue that was in January. There were a number of changes in extended services, Shatteren Transit. Most of those concerned with, uh, we're, uh, Shatter, city of Shatteren's acquiring a van to use. Fuel lights and a bus and those, uh, those are lower, those are lowered fees. Introduce yourself, uh, your resident.
Hey, my name is Brenda Brister and I live in Chatham. Um, I'm the owner, proprietor and on the side catering. We are a mobile catering food truck, caring for Shatteren. Um, we do catering, power truck, we're a fully licensed. I guess my question, I like offering you guys is that, you know, the
No, not unless you're a certain trade, uh, something, something. They have ramps and harder, wider buildings, pay the taxes. In, in, in my opinion, you know, two hundred and fifty dollars annual fee off every whole year is very, very reasonable. Yeah, I haven't seen the regulations, we're still talking about the registration process. And if you've gone through some type of preliminary one, that's all in good.
Broke down the new form for mobile food vendors. One of those is providing you with a plan for our trash. One of them is providing you with permission slips from private property owners where we set up. I mean, I can provide you with the insurance, that's not a problem. But I don't understand why you would need it when I'm not setting up on public property. I'm not setting up on city property. I'm just trying to understand, if you really want a level of playing field, then we're all right. Why are we paying more than restaurants, than the grocery stores? I am a member of the Shatteren Chamber of Commerce, all small businesses.
I would thank you for doing that.
So, what?
Thank you for being a member of the chamber.
Well, it's important to get me that, it gives me an additional fee that other small businesses don't have.
I would, well, you have this fee, they have a lot of other fees.
I saw, yeah, fifteen dollars a year for a, you know, the, a basket license. Woo, fifteen dollars a year, yeah. Um, I'm still trying to understand why the food vendors have a fee that, that other businesses in town don't. When we're, most of us are members of the same chamber of commerce. We have small businesses in this town. I just help me understand that.
Well, we'll, we'll have, sometime we'll have a discussion, but I, I, I'm a tax accountant and I see the bills and the way property taxes and everything else.
So we collect a smaller way of doing business. I need extra fees because I chose not to purchase an actual building. I mean, I do have an actual building, I purchased my home. There's other businesses that are in town, small businesses. I want to get a massage out of the house on Shatteren Avenue, last street. It's out of their house. I also have a brick and mortar house that my businesses, that's the address of my business. So.
But you operate your business out of your home.
Massages and different things out of their home, they get charged fees.
They have to get a special permit to operate that business if it's not, if it's not properly zoned.
It's all the residents on Shatteren Avenue, I don't know what to tell you about that. But I.
Well, they would be in the, you have to look at the zoning in that area.
And I, I know you guys went into an executive session probably to discuss the season's quarter to come from the attorney's office three weeks ago. Um, unfortunately, I don't see anybody here from that office, but if it's illegal, I mean, if they actually win cases of having councils discriminate against other small businesses, why aren't these fees just wiped out if we're a small business in this town? Even the charge ones coming out from out of state or out of town, I completely get that. But those of us that have Shatteren addresses and are Shatteren residents, we should not have fees.
Thank you for your comment, you know, you, you touched on the reason that these things are. Because the majority, ninety percent of the people who operate my gets, uh, food trucks, food trailers, probably not residents of the city of Shatteren.
And maybe they're not, and if they're coming in from out of town, then maybe they are actual customers in this town. But I'm not going door to door. And when it comes down to it, I have a brush there for care, I'm a mobile caterer. I'm a mobile caterer. So, one of the practical questions, you know that. But, um, one of the things that I would really like to know if this board may be correct, is the caring for safety thing, I was thinking you guys were starting to talk about the safety of our food vendors. You just want to make sure that our residents are safe, you're safe for us. You give us on our, we're just safe. And that would be slander, reliable, great, great program. And I think that may be correct.
Thank you. Yes, please, give me your name and address, please.
So my name's David Nalr. I, uh, currently we own the story thing over here on the first, like, out here in Shatteren. Actually, let me sit down. Um, I'm actually the food truck guy, okay? I make food trucks, food trucks, I own food trucks, okay? So, my question for you guys, is this annual fee, is this per truck or per business?
Well, I don't think, I, I assumed it was per truck. I don't anticipate having a large business that has eight trucks going around Shatteren. Cause we don't have that many needs, if I don't, we don't need that many trucks going around Shatteren.
Okay, so, I don't actually set up in town, I do more events than anything. Because to me, we have, um, you know, if you want to have an event, that's what, it's like, it's bad. But way of food trucks operating down, so it's not, it's a way of people to hear that. My question is then, okay, the health and safety, that was my big concern to this, you know? We have that health, like, I'm licensed, I got the course, I'm back there, there is no way to protect it. We just came back, maybe we would stop, we're going to have a problem. Where you guys make the address that food trucks, um, they, I can tell you, I can show you, I can bring out hundreds, um, health instructions that show you food trucks are great, food trucks are legitimate. We have to have water, we have to have.
Well, I, I think you touched on a point there. If someone's not, if they're registered with the state, we say, that's okay. That, that's what I would say personally.
Okay.
And, and so, sometimes, I, I, it's probably hard to believe, but I believe there might be some people that just say, oh, let's start, start doing this and just go and sell food without getting, getting the proper licenses from the state. And I think that's what we're, we're looking for in the registration process, to say, can you check that box? And once it's checked, we assume it's okay.
Okay, so then I.
There's no reason to, to not trust that.
Now I have a bigger question for you guys, okay? So the people that set up a lemonade stand on their front corner, okay? Do they have to have a license? I mean, I'm.
I, I, I'm not going to get into that. I don't believe so, no.
Okay, so here's the deal, I have lemonade truck, okay? That is literally a lemonade, that's all it is.
Yeah, yeah.
So, therefore the lemonade, but what about like our, our thing that we have set up by corporate shack, the almonds that come in Saturday and set up, they're going in, all this stuff. Are you going to require them that way?
I assume that they are, do have a license, paying that.
Well, it probably should have a solicitor. Because I'm going to equate this, I'm going to equate this with solicitor. In fact, we could have put these type, your type of vending machine vehicles under solicitor. And the solicitor fee is exactly the same for the trucks as for solicitor. And it doesn't say that you're a solicitor from out of town. It's just a solicitor, which you are going on the road, you do business, that's part of what you do. You find your customers, a lot of them are for you, okay? So, in a sense, we're treating, we're not taking you and singling you out of that. I, I don't care what's in the paper, I'm on this document right now. There have been discussions about how to deal with this, as you guys are going around. This sets us, it is an issue in a place, as well. But from our standpoint today, we're treating your solicitors just like we do anybody else's solicitor in Shatteren, the fees are the same as for a solicitor. So that's, I mean, I think we're trying to prepare, why the fees are the same.
I'm sure that you're also hired.
And I would, and I would tell you, there's, there's discussions about more regulation with this. We're going to go slow and try to do the right thing, okay? Cause we don't need to have attorneys from other places sending us letters. I get that, but that's, at this point in time, we're just dealing with a fee, which we're dealing with, even though they're labeled separately in here, but it is a solicitor fee, which we charge all solicitors in the city of Shatteren. So, that's just, as I was listening to the discussion, I wanted a break so I could kind of make that clear. We're not trying to, um, discriminate against anybody, she had made the statement about out of staters. You can't treat out of staters different than in staters. That's discrimination as well. So if you're a solicitor, or you have a mobile food vendor truck, you're going to pay the solicitor fee, basically.
Well, I hope when you get to that point, that you, when you make the rules of the food trucks in town, I am a hundred percent available to help you, cause I do a gazillion different. I mean, I'm, I leave October, I go down and do the end of the show, and I go to the end of the morning, Las Vegas. So, I mean, I do, and if you feel the heart county, I mean, Las Vegas has, when they come to you here in Shatteren, it leaves me at an hour and a half process, and it's very serious. So, you know, I have Maricopa County and Arizona and, thank you.
So, it's a bit evolutionary up here.
Yeah.
It's, it's new to everyone. I mean, this is the last five years, it's become a popular thing.
Yep.
So, I mean, we necessarily try to have a job and do the right thing by everybody. Um, and I'm not going to say some misses on that, but, I mean, we'll try to go through that process slowly. But this is a solicitor.
That part should be listed.
Well, we get a label of that, and as we go forward and make, uh, but that's what it amounts. Just the fees are the same.
I have a final question, is it per vendor or per it?
I, I would say the way I read it is per vendor. So if you have multiple trucks, you want a vendor. That would be my, talking out loud, thinking out loud, because it says vendor.
That's what I, I'm, 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 I'm.
So this is a different fee, I think it's an end fee, it's right there in the name. I, I, I think that I would appear to city staff to, to treat it as a per vendor fee.
That's going to be my. Okay, that's all I have, thanks guys for your.
We've come up here, we're broadcasting live on television and we want everyone in public to be able to hear it.
He had just brought up that you guys, well, and it even said in something that I read, that you'd put together a group to actually talk to different cities and to find out, you know, what would be fair. Who did that, who did they talk to? Because I know there were, a lot of us, we've talked to each other and no, they didn't talk to any of us here in town that we're aware of. Um, so who did you talk to? And what towns did you call? Cause Rapid City, their fee's a hundred bucks, Hot Springs, a hundred bucks, Crawford, a hundred bucks. Alliance, nothing. There is no fee in Alliance as long as you're on private property. There's no fee in Gordon, as long as you're on private property. So all around us, a hundred bucks, about what the average fee is. Just throwing that out there. You want to level the playing field, you want to do all this stuff. You say you've talked to other places, you say you've talked to other vendors, but yet, who? We've talked to each other, we know you didn't talk to any of us. It's all sham.
Evening, my name's Clay Anderson, uh, live here in Shatteren. Bear with me, do some last minute notes. How much revenue do food vendors actually bring in to the city of Shatteren every year, roughly? You guys know? Do you think it would be enough to even cover the salary of one council member? The six food trucks that I see on a regular basis? So, what my question's going to be is, what's the point in raising these fees if it's not even going to cover any cost to the city? All right, uh. And then, I'll touch up again with, uh, they're operating on private businesses, on private property. So again, that has nothing to do with the city's business or the zoning commissions. Also, I don't even understand why, why that is even an issue with the city or. If they're operating on private property and they have an agreement with that other, with that business, then what's, how does that entail being the city's or the zoning and planning commission's business? Cause it doesn't.
We charge solicitors to be private, probably, it's the same, same type of theory.
And do, do we check for, just make sure they're up with states?
I, that, that, I can't tell you.
And, okay, so with insurance and health and safety, again, it took me five minutes to find the OSHA regulation, which, bring it up here real quick, is order nineteen point six. That's federal law that regards mobile food vendors. And then the state of Nebraska has their own, uh, which I don't have it with me at the moment.
Department of Agriculture, is that correct? And you get your health and service through the Department of Agriculture?
Yeah, Department of Agriculture.
Yeah, Agriculture, I think it is.
So with that, how, why was that even brought up in the, why was safety ever brought up? When it took me five minutes to find those answers?
Well, I think that it was brought up just to ensure that everyone that had a food truck was following the regulations put, set forth by the Department of Agriculture. So that if someone came into town, they were following the health regulations that you have to follow. I think that's what it was, just to make sure that someone didn't come into town and not follow the same regulations that you have to follow.
That's all I, that's all I need to, uh, and to touch up on is, so you, uh, paid quite a few fees everywhere you go, right? That adds up pretty quick, right? That's a lot for a small business. That's a lot for a small business, for operating costs. So, why would we want to be a part of nickel and diming for these small businesses that are just trying to get by? If we want to be competitive with the other area communities, then we need to show that we treat these small businesses better than the other area small communities. It, to me, this just looks like extortion. To get more money.
I cannot see where a two hundred and fifty dollar annual fee could be considered extortion.
Well, there's really no need to raise these fees. Because it's not, even with inflation, these fees are almost worthless. I mean, it's not going to cover the cost of even your temporary employees for the city. So, really...
It does take time.
And then, you know, again, with leveling the playing field, do they still have to operate between nine AM and five PM like other solicitors?
That is another...
I mean, that is, so...
I'm saying that guideline also.
How is it that, you know, brick and mortars can stay open almost as late as they want, but mobile food vendors have to operate until five PM and they miss that huge supper rush? That's a lot of business that they can lose.
So, was it...
You know, you want to treat them like solicitors, but they're not solicitors. You want it...
Did you see a specific policies that the food trucks can only operate between certain?
I think it was nine AM.
Where did you see that?
It was, it's in the Solicitor Ordinance.
So, that's a solicitor and maybe a food truck.
That might be a reason. That's one of the reasons, I think, we were trying to split it up from the solicitors so that we could look at those things and make appropriate guidelines.
It was like an application that the city had, and at the end of it, there was a list of different things. It was providing a, a plan for our trash. There was, I mean, it was ridiculous stuff. It was like, do you ask a restaurant for all of this stuff? I don't think you did.
Well, you don't, because the restaurant signs up for water, sewer and sanitation and it's all arranged.
Well, I pay for trash for my house, which is where my business is.
Well, but your, the fee that you charge, pay for trash in your house is not included. It's paying for your business. I pay a fee for sanitation in my house. I pay a fee for sanitation in my office.
And the private businesses have allowed me to use their dumpster also. So, as long as I'm at private business setting up and they are going to allow me to use their dumpster, then I'm going to do that.
Well, I think part of the problem is that you've seen a form, which I don't, I think we saw for five minutes, and sent it back and said, okay, show us something, come up with a plan. And you're taking it as, this is what's happening. And that's not necessarily what is happening. Like Adam said, this is a process that we're working through. I think there was a plan to reach out to the mobile food vendors to get their input. I don't think that's, apparently from you, that hasn't taken place yet. But I think that was part of the, the process that was going to take place. So, I, I think some of this is the cart before the horse. I think, uh, maybe there's, people are getting up in arms before there's actually, there's nothing really set in stone, except for the two hundred, going from two hundred to two fifty.
And I think all of that stuff should be discussed and figured out before you vote on this.
Uh, last issue. Uh, my time in the Marine Corps, one of the big things was operational risk management. With that cease and desist from the Institute of Justice, if they were to go through with their suit, would the city actually be able to risk possible financial suicide? Which I think it would happen, just looking at the results of what this firm has done in the past in bigger cities, much bigger than Shatteren. Uh, you know, one was in North, like Charleston, North Carolina was one of them, I believe. What's the city planning on doing with that, with that cease and desist?
First of all, I don't think it's a cease and desist. It's just an informational letter giving us historical background on what's going on in other places that this law firm has dealt with. Nowhere in this letter do I find where to cease and desist or stop what you're doing.
All right.
Okay, I, I just want to clarify. I mean, it's, those are legally, that's, that's a fair distinction. So, I would just point that out. I read through it and they talk about what they've done and where they've been in other places and, uh, how this is problematic, um, for the businesses, which anytime there's fees, it is. But I don't see anywhere in here that says, you know, cease and desist your activities. And quite honestly, we, we really only had some discussion about creating regulations for food trucks. There hasn't been, I haven't been involved in a sit-down discussion as to hard, I haven't seen the form you're talking about. Plus, we haven't, other than adding this to our fee schedule in an analogous situation to a solicitor, that's about all we've done or even discussed at this point. So, there hasn't been time to reach out to the vendors in town and say, what do you think about this? To my knowledge, I haven't been part of the discussion. Maybe there hasn't, but I have.
I've never, I haven't been part of anything. And in regards to, you know, caterer, I consider that a different business. You're catering, you can't, you can't, you're a digital...
A vendor's company, themselves, two hours, that would be, you know, that would be a distinction for me. If I'm a caterer, I'm going to hire you or you're going to hire me. And that would be a difference. If I'm pulling up, have permission, I'm good, I'm self-employed, hanging out by side, it's not going to be coming in. It's not like that.
That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thanks, Clay.
Hi, I'm Tanya Watson. I'm just a Dawes County resident. I live outside of town here. I just came for informational purposes. I don't own a, a food truck or anything. But I sit here and I'm a little bit confused because I have Mr. Edmund saying that, um, they are considered solicitors. And then over here, I think it was Mr. Graves, said, no, no, you're not a solicitor.
For purposes of fee equity, we're treating them as solicitors.
Okay.
The fees are the same.
So, I guess, my question is, to me, a solicitor is somebody who comes up and knocks on my door and says, hey, I'm selling candy bars for the Boy Scouts. Is that not what soliciting is as opposed to somebody? I, I've not seen the food truck vendors that I know of standing out soliciting, you know, going down the street and trying to get people to purchase their...
They're on, they're on, and again, speaking out loud, because I suspect that they're parking. They all use, I don't know where they park in town, somewhere along highway, in town. They have taken their product to a public place to solicit business from individuals of color.
I guess, how is that any different than Taco John's that has their business in a public place that is soliciting?
They own the property that they're on.
Okay, so if they're set up at a private property? We're, we're delving into private property rights here.
And that's the letter indicates that we receive, which it may be out there, maybe not. This is an evolving area. I mean, this is, communities like this and in Nebraska and other places, maybe in Maricopa County where I grew up, they've been dealing with it for a long time. So, they, they probably are over-regulated, I would guess, just knowing that. Or, or Henderson, Nevada, I'm guessing. But for a community like this, we're trying to do this the right way, okay? So...
I'm just asking some honest questions as far as the...
So, I, I think dialogue with, I think dialogue with everyone. Whether you be a vendor or a brick and mortar, there should be discussions with everybody here, talking about what, what's going to happen.
I was just listening to the private property aspect of it. I strongly believe in private property. People have rights on their property.
Not recently, but in the past that have come and said, we didn't give them the permission to be here.
Okay, that's a different story.
And they, and they have to deal with it.
Right.
So, it's trying to make it a lot more clear.
And I guess, as far as your statement is, you can't treat out-of-state the same as you treat in-state? I don't agree with that because the state of Nebraska does that all the time. If you go down...
You can have an in-state, I'll backtrack that a little bit. If you're hunting, you can pay an out-of-state fee to an in-state person, okay?
Yeah, if you go to State Farm, it can have a different...
For purpose, we'll probably have to look at that as well. But we have to be very careful about discrimination and the letter was, we got it. Okay? So, there's, there's, I'm not sure what he talks about. There's a fee that solicitors have to pay, which would seem to be, in my mind, and maybe I'm wrong, I could be convinced otherwise, but seems to be fair because there are people here that come and want to be business in this town. Or people that live here that want to be business in this town. We're not charging more to be a vendor in this town. We're trying to keep it on the keel at this point. That's the problem.
Okay, and then I guess Mr. Klein made a statement about, um, you know, looking for revenue. I can't remember exactly, but I came away with the feeling that costs are rising in the city, so where can we go look for money? And this is where we can get some money. And that didn't sit too well with me. So, I don't know if you want to clarify that.
No, that's not what I meant. I meant to, to help compensate for the wages and other expenses of the city.
You're looking for someplace else to tap so you can raise that.
If we're going to have any regulation at all, and I think it's better to have this regulation or some guidelines that we want to follow, such as, yes, you have a sales tax requirement. Yes, you've been approved by the Department of Agriculture, you know, rather than forgetting about all that stuff and then wait until there's a problem and then call the police chief and say, solve our problem.
I'm not, I...
So, it's easier to do it administratively than to involve law enforcement.
So, is there not some, I, as I told you, I'm not a food truck owner. So, I don't know what the process is that they have to go through. But is there not some way when they get these permits, is there not, they don't have to come to the city then and file them or is...
We would be the last to know because they would, they should be, you know, registering with Department of Revenue to get their sales tax license. And that can cover the virtually any, the whole state of Nebraska. If you go to another state, then you got to repeat it with each state. And of course, each place where you sell your product has a different rate. So, you have to be knowledgeable about all that stuff. And then, any applicable food regulations are administered by the State Department. Probably, like Mark said, the Department of Agriculture is involved in there.
And these are...
So, you, you guys just are trying to...
And we just want to be able to check those things. And regarding the hours, the food truck should be, instead of complaining to us, probably saying, hey, it's good that you pull us out, kind of recognize us individually instead of a solicitor. And, you know, these are what's a reasonable accommodation. Instead of five o'clock, maybe it's, you know, six o'clock, give an hour maybe, changes with the, the weather, the winter time versus the summer time.
I would say to that, that if they want to be out there freezing their butt off at nine o'clock at night in a blizzard, they have the right to sell their food at nine o'clock in a blizzard. Um, but I guess for the brick and mortar businesses, you don't, do you go in and, and check up on all of their things that you're saying that you do with, you're going to do with the...
Well, if somebody said, John Doe opened up a restaurant and he hasn't been inspected by the Department of Agriculture, uh, we would probably take action, just contact John Doe and say, is that true?
Why can't you treat the food truck businesses in that manner? Is my question. And I would say, as far as you're leveling, uh, leveling the playing field, every brick and mortar restaurant in this town has the ability, if they desire, to go get a food truck and to do exactly what these people are trying to do. So, I think the, the playing field is level. Um, they have the ability to do what they want to do. They have the ability to get a grant or get a loan, find a brick and mortar and do that if they desire. So, that your, your claim that this is to level the playing field, I don't think is a valid, I don't think that's valid. And if you're not going to hold a brick and mortar to the same standard, you were saying if John Doe calls up and says, I don't think they've been inspected, then we'll look into it. But you're not taking that stand with the food truck owners.
Well, we make it a little easier for them. Because they can do that, you know, if we develop the application process of some type of form where we can check off the block and...
Why does it matter when you don't have that for the brick and mortar? I guess is my question. Because you don't have that same, you're not treating these two businesses, these two food, you know, businesses the same.
Probably because of...
But why is it difficult to develop an application process? All of them have...
Because that's a service that you're, that's here all the time. Some food trucks are here all the time. But some food trucks aren't here all the time. And we don't know who's coming in and coming out. So, they're not for sale. So, we get that set.
And I would just say, as far as, um, as just an average consumer, as someone brought up the lemonade stand, people selling cookies on the corner, you know, my kids growing up have done that. Uh, buyer beware is something that we as Americans have just been able to grow up. And, you know, if I want to go to his food truck and I walk up and it looks pretty dirty and I'm thinking, I have the choice to walk away and not to eat there, I guess.
I love your approach. I wish it was that way.
Well, I just think there needs, you talk about level playing field and it doesn't seem like it's level. And I'm just here as an absolute consumer. I have no state, I don't own a food truck. I don't own Taco John's. You know, I'm just somebody who lives in the county. I shop here. And I think if you want a, a level playing field, then you, it needs to be level across the board. So, I appreciate the time. Thank you.
One thing I, I was going to ask, just for clarification, events, okay? So, I'm going to ask, like, FER trade days? Are you going to require food trucks to have a license to come there? Or if it's an event, they do not?
Okay, I'll refer that to, to trade days for a second. The, uh, so far as it's been in the past, this, everything has been under solicitor's licenses in the past. It was all pretty loose. Uh, the city has not traditionally gone to every vendor at the traders market and said, you have to have a solicitor's license. The license that they're paying to the event and the information that they're providing to the event, um, is a separate thing. It doesn't have to be that way. Uh, but that's just, so far as I understand, if there's anybody on city staff who would like to say otherwise, um, the licensing and registration for the events, um, covers their presence for that event. Uh, most of the food vendors that have come to FER trade days, I believe, have been, have visited at other times. There's a couple that were just there for FER trade days. But, um, that's, so far as I understand it, that's the way it's worked in the past. Not to say that it should work that way in the future.
I believe that's why it's a week per day also listed.
Right.
Okay, the, the only question I have, okay, is, is to level the playing field, okay? So, if I come in here and I, and I do, I come and buy my license like I'm supposed to, whatever, okay? If I go to FER, so what I just got the vibe here is if I only do events, I don't have to have this license. Is that correct? Because that's all I do is events. So, I...
I'm going to disagree with what our councilman said. I, I believe under this, you're coming to an event for a day, you pay the daily fee.
Okay?
That would be my interpretation of the way this is set up.
To be clear, that's the way, that's the way it was when we were not doing a very good job of keeping up with it. I think that by splitting this out into a separate category and taking it out of solicitors, I think you're right, Adam. I think it doesn't make any sense to have, to have it, you know, say that, hey, as part of your, if you're gonna be here, yeah, you can, you're part of the event, but you also do have to have your food vendor license to the city.
There's no reason to put a per-day fee on there, or a per-week fee on there if we're not gonna take those fees for those events.
Correct.
It doesn't make any sense.
Correct. And that's why, to me, I think if you, if you're gonna have it, because I'm gonna be honest with you. I come to fur trade days, there's people that whip in Saturday, whip out of here, take their cash, get the hell out of town. I mean, it's very straight. I mean, they ain't, they ain't spending a dime in this town. And so, and they don't have to buy a license, and because they only come to events here. And as like, my son questioned me of why I bought my vendor, why I pay this because I only do events. Well, because that's what it is. It, you know, it's, it's a license, buy it, be done with it. You know, I do Rapid City. I do Tuesday night food trucks in Rapid City. I would be there tonight, but it got canceled because of the fighters, so it's, it is the way it is. You know, we pay fees all over we go. So I just want to clarify that these vendors that come in for fur trade days or whatever, that Harvest Moon thing, they have their licenses too. And, and I think it, it needs to be enforced. So if it's the police department that has to enforce it, or whoever, it needs to be enforced. And we get a copy of it, we attach it to our windows, we prove that we have it, so.
Yep, agree.
Okay, that's all I have. Thanks.
My, my name's Donna Brest. I'm currently the city clerk, so with the city of Shadron. As all of you know, I'm a short-term city clerk. So I won't be seeing the rest of this process unless I decide to participate as a volunteer, as an interested party.
Or open a food truck.
Ah, there you go. Or as a council member. We'll see. But I've been the city clerk for a few years, and so a lot of what's been said tonight, I could offer a lot of history and the way things are, the way they are right now. But I'd start with, we did send out notice of a meeting with the mobile food vendors that we're aware of for this Thursday, September fifth, at nine o'clock in this room. And the notice probably went out late. If, if some of you haven't received it with the holiday, we did send out emails to those. We had email addresses for, and I did hear back from a couple of them last week. So I know some people are receiving that notice, but checking to see how well Thursday goes and what kind of turnout there is. Maybe there'll need to be a second, third, fourth session. It'd be great to have the turnout like you have tonight and to have that input, because as what's been already said, if there were comments about there already being a group, that's not the case. The planning commission's taken a look at the mobile food vendor issue. The rest has been all city staff. And it would be, we did, we have done a lot of research. We have done a lot of checking with other communities, because we do want to see what else is out there and what other communities are doing, what's acceptable and what's not. But as far as a group that's already been formed, we haven't got that far. As the council's aware, when this first came forward, it was the planning commission who'd been looking at the issue. And the form that might be out there and about circulating is a form that the planning commission had proposed, as Councilmember Graves said. There's, nothing that's been taken any further with that form. And it's a good starting place, but it's obvious that there's a lot more that needs to go into that. The state of Nebraska recently passed a legislative bill that there is a mobile food truck trailer registry out there that municipalities are supposed to respond to at the end of the year, a list of mobile food vendors that operate in our community. So there is more and more, even on the state level, recognition of the mobile food vendors is something that does need to be looked at. As far as solicitors versus mobile food vendors, the solicitor ordinance that we have, that we've tried to enforce, is way outdated. And we've tried to use that ordinance for all types of sales in Shadron. And the definition of solicitor isn't, doesn't just go door-to-door with sales. It does have terminology in there with being a transient merchant or somebody who is setting up on the corner, selling rugs and blankets or whatever. But I think the need for the city is, number one, to update that solicitor ordinance. And like I say, we've used that ordinance to try to cover mobile food vendors. And obviously, it isn't a good fit, and it does need work. And so, there's kind of two, two or three separate issues out there. The fee ordinance you're looking at tonight, the issue of solicitors themselves, and the issue of mobile food vendors. And hopefully, it's just not gonna all get thrown together in one size fits all. It's obviously that, that can't happen. But I just wanted to mention, there was something said about tobacco licenses being fifteen dollars and, and asking for, you know, help you understand that is a fee set by the state of Nebraska. And it's actually fifteen dollars, but if you come in for a license after July one, it goes down to seven dollars and fifty cents. It's crazy, and that fee's been like that forever. But that money actually goes to the school district. So for the city to recover any kind of money or pay for administrative work, to issue a tobacco license, administrative, the time it takes to do that, and the paperwork, the license itself, and the postage, there's no way it recovers costs. Liquor licenses have been set years and years and years ago. And that's set by state statute. And the occupation tax for a liquor license at the time, and we're going back many years, that was to cover the cost for a police officer's salary. Obviously, there's no way that happens. But I would just like to, to clarify the fact that solicitors versus mobile food vendors, hopefully, doesn't get all thrown together and mixed up because I think it's in everybody's best interest to try to just regulate, and I don't want to make this sound bad, but to regulate the mobile food vendors in such a way that there is a checklist for, yes, they're registered with Department of Agriculture. They do have their sales tax permit. They do, not treating, trying to treat them different from a brick and mortar, but just trying to have some regulations in place. And whether that fee is ten dollars to register with the city of Shadron, or whether it's two hundred and fifty dollars, or whether it's five hundred dollars, some municipalities charge. Hopefully, that won't be the main argument of all this. It's just trying to get regulations in place where people are treated consistently and fairly. And right now, as a city clerk with our current solicitor ordinance, it's very hard to enforce that. And the police department tries their best to assist where they can. But a lot of what was mentioned tonight, I hope people show up at the meeting Thursday at nine, and if not, submit their comments in writing. Or Mr. Miller, we've had several conversations. He's got, brought some great ideas to the table to think about. But there's a lot of work that's gonna have to go into this before anything's finalized. But I hope it's not taken as a negative. I hope it's taken as a, a right way to do business. And as far as the solicitor ordinance, again, I keep going back to that. But the solicitor ordinance was first put in place for the safety of its citizens. And we're going everything from the blanket rug-selling people to the fly-by-nights, people who come in, wanna shingle your roof after a hailstorm. They're here and gone the next day, and we've had no protection for our citizens. So it's, it's a way bigger thing than just trying to kick on one set of business people. I did want to bring up, and I'll leave it at that, but I think the current city hall staff, police department, and everybody that's been involved in the discussions so far are really taking this serious and trying again to do what's fair and what's equal. But just like the comments about the hours, there were comments about, because there's been interest in some vendors wanting to do breakfast burritos. There's been interest in some vendors who want to do the hot dogs or burritos after the bars close. So there has been discussion to try accommodate that. If the hours need to be from six AM to one, one-thirty PM, no, AM. So I mean, there's a lot of thought going into this, but I hope people won't take that form that was, might be out there circulating from the planning commission as, as set in stone. Kind of like Councilmember Graves said, there's, when that was presented, it was definitely clear that the whole issue needs more work. But thank you. Again, I wanted to put the word out there for today, or Thursday at nine o'clock, for anybody who can make it. If you can, let us know what works for you. We'll try to schedule a second session, whether it be in the evening or other hours. Thank you.
May I make a suggestion? It seems to me that the fifty-dollar fee ordinance, increase of fee ordinance, seemed to be a sticking point with some of the food vendors. And there's apparently a meeting that's gonna be set this Thursday. Is that something we could potentially table, this fee schedule?
No, we could. We could make a motion to amend the solicitor, probably both the solicitors and the proposed mobile food, and back those up to the old rates.
Until the discussion can take place.
And then pass the fee ordinance without that, and then not much is gonna change within a year. We'll see how we are next year when we do this again. Not that, as was pointed out, there's not that much money.
So if you amend, if you amend your ordinance, there was no previous fee for mobile food vendors. If you amend your ordinance, you go back to the two-hundred-dollar fee. That's just gonna affect the solicitor's side of it. Because the, the mobile food vendors, it's new to this ordinance.
But then if we treat them as a solicitor, then are they bound by the hours?
They haven't been, by the solicitor's, I don't think they've been treated that way. Solicitor analogy is just for purposes of fairness in the fee, okay? We've never, I don't believe ever charged a food vendor a solicitor fee, or have we? I don't know. Has the office charged two hundred dollars a year for a solicitor fee for a food vendor previously, okay? So then, yeah, it would go back to that part, if you just amended your ordinance.
Wherever we go.
Basically, those two, those ones...
Annual for both of those, just change, a motion to change it to two hundred?
They would just change it back to what the solicitor was, because this wasn't in here.
Yeah. Could we have a motion to change these amounts from two-fifty, one-hundred-and-fifty to two-hundred-and-fifty and twenty?
So you're saying is still keep the food truck portion in there, but drop it back to the two, or give it to the food truck?
You can't amend it to drop the mobile food vendors language, because that's the new language, okay? That's why everybody's here.
Right. But then one of the, one of the other concerns was then they'd be bound by the solicitor's timeframe.
If that's how they've been handling it, it's been two hundred dollars. Is that what you've paid in the past? I, I don't know. That's...
But why, I don't want to, I don't want to...
We ran it all together so that we quote level playing field.
But I don't want to put them back if they're in the solicitor's pot, that they can't operate past a certain time. If they, if they're so, I don't want to limit that if, if we put it back, because that makes sense.
I think what Mark's trying to get at, can we just table the whole thing if we're in the meeting? You can't really table an ordinance.
For more discussion.
Yeah, this is our third reading.
You're on your third reading. You could table it, to come back, I guess. You certainly could table it for the next meeting.
I guess what I, again, go ahead, Donna.
No, no, I was just gonna say, yes, we have been using the solicitor ordinance for mobile food vendors just because we don't have anything else in place. And so that's the reasoning that they have charged the same fee as a solicitor, which the word solicitor, obviously, by definition in the code, covers a lot of other things than just listing door-to-door. But, but yes, that is what we're charging right now, is the same fee as a solicitor. And I think, like the city attorney said, whether you table this tonight or whether you take mobile food vendors out of the ordinance, I would think whenever, because municipal code is gonna be, need to be updated. And that's when we were talking the other day, all the other things that are talked about with dealing with mobile food vendors will be covered by the ordinance or by the application itself. But I would think at any time, the, the fee ordinance could be amended to include the mobile food vendor fees, wherever you set those to be. But to cover right now for what we're doing, we do use the solicitor ordinance for mobile food vendors. Just not having anything else in place.
I'm sure people disagree with me, but in looking at all this and what's been proposed here, to me, the difference between the two-hundred and two-fifty for an annual fee might be an opportunity to actually have this mobile food vendor process starting, which I think will probably end up with longer hours for them. So to me, it's kind of an opportunity.
It's the beginning of the process, not the end, which is what I was gonna say. I think that, I think we need to have a separate category for them. I think covering mobile food vendors under the solicitors, as, and as Donna has talked about since the very, this very first began, is far from ideal. So I think we need to have the separate category, you know, if we're going to, I don't think the fifty dollars is, I guess what I'm hearing is not a discussion about fifty dollars, it's a discussion about confusion and about... I guess what I'm hearing is not a discussion about fifty dollars, it's a discussion about confusion and about a lack of clarity about what's happening, and I think that, you know, the fee is not, the, all of this discussion wasn't about fifty bucks, I don't believe. Um, I think this was a discussion about, well, what's going to happen, and that meeting on Thursday is going to be the beginning of the process. I think there's also, the level the playing field thing has come up a lot. I don't know in what context that was used, but I think what I would, what I would say, though, what I wanna level the playing field for is our local food trucks, who we know, who came voluntarily, on their own, to get these licenses, even though, as, as he would tell you, it's not really a great fit under the solicitor's process. We have a lot of good, honest, hard-working local businesses with food trucks who come in and just voluntarily did this. Um, and I wanna level the playing field between them and somebody who, as they talked about, shows up here today, gone tomorrow. And I think you have to have some level of, of information on those vendors, because if fly-by-night food rolls in and says, hey, we're here in Shadron, one day only, we're selling this, this, and that, and there's an outbreak of listeria, you know, well, is it, is it buyer beware that they got listeria? Is it, well, they were on private property, you can give somebody listeria on private property? That's silly. You know, we owe it to our citizens to look out for them, to have some protections in place, and I think it's very reasonable to have a vendor license where you come to city hall and, as these folks have voluntarily done already, show us a business license, show us your health license, show us your liability insurance, and then you're registered, you're on the books. That way, if something does happen and fly-by-night food rolls in, well, they had to come in and they had to show us their insurance, they had to show us their business license. They have to do, they have to do everything that the honest folks are already doing, and if they do have, cause some kind of listeria outbreak, they're on the books for how to go after them. You know, it's not just, well, they said they were from, you know, X, Y, and Z city, and I guess we'll have to go look into it for recourse. And having, having a formal license that applies to this, rather than trying to shoehorn it and hope everybody's honest, makes sense. And this is, you know, we can set the fee tonight, but that doesn't set anything as regards to the application or what documentation they have to show. Ultimately, to me, this is something I think that should be supporting of local businesses and supporting our local folks who are already doing the right thing voluntarily and out of pocket. Versus, you know, uh, we talked about the vendors at Fur Trade Days. Just because they hadn't been, doesn't mean they shouldn't be, and I think that they should be. Everybody who does business in the city like this should at least prove that they are a legitimate business and put their registration on file to say, yep, I'm willing to put my name on the books as a food truck. And if something happens, if there's, you know, if there's some kind of issue, here's where you can find me.
And I, and I think that's the important part, again, tying that fee into the registration process, but it's trying to get a process, a registration process in place where we get the word out there as best as we can through the city's website and wherever else we can put it, that if you come to do business in Shadron, whether you're local or out of town or out of state, you still need to provide that documentation. And tying a fee to that maybe gives it a little bit more, people may pay a little bit more attention to it again, whether it's a ten or fifty dollar or five hundred dollar fee. But we can tell you many stories through the years where before mobile food vendors became as popular as they are, we'd have people come in, drive in, pull up to a place, open their trunk, and start selling meat. Packaged, packaged meat out of their trunks. And those things have happened, and so like you said, the citizens deserve some protection from those kind of things happening, and I understand it's buyer beware. But at the same time, the city does owe its citizens, the State Department of Agriculture has representatives across the state who try to cover as much ground as they can, and the individual that covers our areas from Alliance. But the state must recognize the need that, that there needs to be some regulation or some monitoring. I know the mobile food vendors are becoming very popular, and you can tell by the lines at noon and during the, the day, the number of people that, that take advantage and comments of, people support the mobile food vendors because they like the variety of food it offers. So I mean, there's a lot of good that can come from this, but, um.
And I think it reassures the citizens and also reassures the other businesses that, yeah, I'm not a sucker for doing this. Everybody who comes in here has to do this, and there's not somebody, there's not a, there's not a precedent for people who just show up and do it and don't pay the license and don't have to prove that they are a legit business, you know. I think that's, I think that's the reassurance for our citizens, our community members, and also our businesses, that, yeah, we're all playing by the same set of rules. And I think this is, you know, like you said, this is just, this is just fair, and I think it's, I think it's even for everybody, and I think that this is, the exact specifics of the form and how everything works out can be hammered out over time. We don't have to have that decided tonight, and, and this, ultimately, the council, you know, this, this, we're just passing a fee ordinance, we don't really have anything to say about it right now. It'll come in, it'll come up in the future.
But if you do adopt that fee ordinance, it does take effect October one.
Yep.
So whoever's in.
And it would effectively take food trucks out of the solicitor, so that form that has those restrictive hours, there's no form for food trucks at this point in time. If we leave it in the solicitor, so say we take that mobile food truck out of this ordinance tonight, you will continue to be considered solicitors and bound by the form that you have signed in the past. Just, I'm just to clarify it to you as well. Also, you also have the ability to table this tonight if you choose. You have the ability to amend what you're doing. Discussion's gonna be lengthy.
Can I just have one thing clarified, I guess, what Miles was talking about? Is that whose job then, I guess, I see what you're saying, as far as people coming in from out of town, the one night, gonna be in Shadron, who is, who is going around and making sure when they show up that they have paid the fee? Is that the police department's responsibility? Oh, I just saw Oyster Bob's is here, and I gotta go make sure he's got the fee, or he's paid the fee. Who, is that the city council members are driving the streets looking for?
We don't get paid enough for that. Traditionally, so far as I understand, I don't think Rick wants us out there. Doing that. That's traditionally been the role of the police department. If there's a vendor, if there's somebody who's set up, you know, out selling blankets or hawking some kind of like produce out the back of a truck.
So every time they see a new business.
It's gonna be complaint-driven typically.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
It's gonna be complaint-driven typically, because this city hall gets more calls from people complaining about things, and then they're gonna contact the police department unless an officer goes up on their own.
This was one of my concerns of the first meeting, is enforcement of it.
Right.
So I reached out to the chief of state enforcement, got a pretty good response back, and I showed it to the district attorney already. It is usually the police department or code enforcement officer that would do the enforcement of this. Most of the agencies I talk to, they're not even attached. I'll be honest, we're about safety.
Right, right.
And when we're talking safety precautions, about domestic disputes and fights, I think we got a lot of the things.
And I greatly appreciate your service, all of you. I really thank you so much for you guys, you guys do a good job of protecting us. That's what I was want, you know, I'm concerned, that was, one concern as far as his statement is, I don't think it should be your job to have to go and say, oh my goodness, I don't think I've seen that food truck here before, did they have a license? So in that respect, it really isn't the, you know, there can be people coming in and, obviously, and you may not get a consumer complaint. I, if the food's good and people are.
Usually, it's gonna be one food truck calling on the out-town food truck, saying they're in here. I'm just, that's the reality of it. It's gonna be a local, maybe a local, maybe not, but if somebody that did get their license, they're gonna call on somebody that just showed up and say, hey, you need to check on this truck, because they just rolled in.
So then you're just, you're gonna rely on community policing for it to be enforced?
A lot of it, a lot of all policing is complaint-driven.
It's the same, that's also the same process for overgrown, you know, vegetation, for low-hanging branches. Most of this code enforcement stuff is, is just based on complaints. And we would hope that, again, like I talked about, being even-handed and leveling the playing field between all these different vendors, that the folks who are paying and are honest, if they're gonna know when somebody rolls in and sets up, and they.
Okay, I just wanted clarification on whose job it was, and you kinda made it sound like it was all, you know, everybody's gonna be toeing the line, and I just, just wanted clarification on that. Thank you.
So I am also a concerned citizen of Daz County.
Name and address?
I'm Lacy Traster, and I live outside of town, but I've had a Shadron address for over twelve years now. And I really appreciate what Marx was trying, uh, Mark Graves was trying to do just now, tabling this discussion. Somebody implied that we're getting the cart before the horse by being here tonight. But the fact is, the city council is trying to implement these changes, part of these changes tonight by increasing fees. It is a monumentous increase considering where the fees were at before. And in that process of implementing these fees before there's been any discussion or community hearing or anything of that matter, um, they are creating a legal, an enforcement, and administrative nightmare for the city. Um, and so I would really encourage you to consider what Graves was suggesting, that this be tabled and that more discussion be held, because the city has chose to have their first hearing after this meeting. We came tonight to let our voices be heard. There's been several people here that are concerned about property rights, about the economic repercussions that this will discourage vendors from coming to our town, that there's a lot of nuances involved, and technicalities and definitions that need to be hashed out before this is brought forward more. So I would encourage the council to go with Mark Graves' suggestion. Um, and then if the hours of oper, operation are a concern, I want the council to remember that it's always an option to repeal ordinances that are out of date. So if, uh, mobile food vendors shouldn't have to hour, work within certain hours, um, because other restaurants don't have limitations on their hours, that you can repeal that and say, hours of operations don't apply any differently to this set of businesses than they do to others. Um, so that would be one suggestion that I would have. It would lessen the burden of enforcement and administrative hassles and, so I would encourage that. I would, I would ask the council as one question, is there an imminent danger involved that is pressing, that this has to be decided on tonight? Um, or is it just a matter of money? So, thank you.
Again, I'm Dave Miller. So I'm gonna ask the council to leave this in there, and, and for the simple fact is, I don't wanna be a solicitor, okay, as a food truck guy. I absolutely do not want to follow your solicitor rules, okay? I wanna be a mobile food vendor, okay? So you, you've given us two options. One, you can either leave us in as solicitors, or we can be a mobile food vendor. And I'm gonna ask you, as a community member of Shadron, who had just bought a house in town, who I'm gonna ask you to leave us as a mobile food vendor, okay? Versus going to a solicitor thing, because for fifty dollars, guys, we're talking fifty dollars a year. It's the only difference we're talking here. It's peanuts. It's literally five orders of food, I don't care which way you look at it. You go to a food truck, an average order is eleven dollars and thirteen cents. You got five orders. That's it. So, and that's for one year. It really makes no sense to, to leave us as solicitors when soliciting rules versus food trucks are gonna be two total separate deals, so that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. So does anyone make, wanna make any motion to change or table the whole ordinance until next meeting?
I'd like to make a disclaimer for next reading, so that it falls after the discussion with those that it's going to affect.
And that's.
So that.
Adam, table the.
The, the whole discussion.
Third reading of the ordinance.
You can table the third reading until the next meeting. By tabling it, it'll have to be on the next agenda.
I would argue against tabling. Um, does, I guess, does anybody want to second that motion?
I, I made the comment before that I think a lot of people disagree with you, but the latest thing was, it's kind of an opportunity to get the food vendors recognized and get this, a little bit of administrative regulations that we're going to do, work with the food vendors to make it livable, both for them and for the city residents. So, and the quicker we can get that going, the better.
So there's no second to table. So you have a motion before you to pass this on third reading.
Do you wanna outline the rest of the fees, George? I know you were talking about.
Okay, I, I, where was I asked when I?
Uh, you had just gotten to extended services, uh, on the city transit area.
Oh, yes. We mentioned the additional electricity franchise fee, and we were talking about extended services, city transit. And if anyone has any questions about that, I'd be happy to review that. Sewer connection tap fee, it goes from four hundred dollars to four hundred and fifty dollars. And it also adds a school sewer district tap fee determined by ordinance, and this is for a new area as opposed to an existing tap fee on an existing sewer line that's been there quite some times. Um, the water consumption fees are going up roughly ten percent. If you have zero to three hundred cubic feet to use in a month, month, um, goes from two dollars and four cents to two dollars and twenty-four cents per one hundred cubic feet. And a lot of things, when you buy more, you get a lower price. Uh, that's not the case with water. Can water keeps increasing the more you use. And we're changing the the meter size, which, um, we increased that, and that's an increase of about ten percent also. Um, most homes probably have a three-quarter inch meter. Goes from fifteen dollars and seventy-three cents to seventeen dollars and thirty cents. And in accordance with the policies that the city has, whenever we raise our consumer rate within town, the golf course rates are raised by the same percentage. And that's it. So, any other comments? I'll go back to.
And with the utility fees, our auditor said that we're quite a bit behind from where we should be in our fee schedule, and that's.
We got cheap water. We got cheap wastewater.
Cheap trash.
Yeah, very, very cheap trash.
Okay, so we're down to, we just completed the discussion part. Okay, so we're down to, we just completed the discussion part. So could we have a roll call, please, ordinance number fourteen thirty-nine for its third and final reading?
Klein?
Yes.
Bannon?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
I declare ordinance number fourteen thirty-nine approved on its third and final reading. Ordinance number fourteen thirty-nine has been read by title three times. The question is, shall ordinance number fourteen thirty-nine of the city of Shadron, Nebraska finally pass? Could we have a roll call, please?
Klein?
Yes.
Bannon?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Ordinance number fourteen thirty-nine is hereby passed and adopted.
Like to introduce resolution twenty-two forty-four, dash seventy-four, remove force adoption.
I will second that.
Motion for resolution number twenty-four dash seventy-four. Motion by Shane, checking by Mark. And this is a resolution to approve an increase in Nebraska Public Power District lease payment from twelve point five percent to thirteen percent effective January first, twenty twenty-five.
If I'm not.
Anybody have any questions?
If I'm not m- s- if I'm not mistaken, the NPPD raised their rates, so we just pass it on, correct? This isn't.
Yeah, 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 this is, it, it'll appear on your electric bill as an increase, um.
And, and I think NPPD raised their rates across entire Nebraska, it wasn't just ours, so.
You get the privilege of paying that thirteen percent or whatever they're increasing to. Um, I have an all-electric house. I will get enormous privilege to send the NPPD more money so that they can send it back to the city. Any other comments? Could we have a roll call, please?
Klein?
Yes.
Bannon?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Okay. Item number D, city clerk, uh, position, the search process. Um, we've all received some information from the city council, um, and what we're coming up with is, um, we've talked about. Donna has updated the city clerk's, uh, descrip-, uh, job description. I, I think the last one I saw before this one was about two pages long, and now it's five pages. Five or six pages. And we have a, a draft of a, an advertisement, um, for it, and it's lacking the, salary range that we wanna put out to the public. So open it up to that. Any other things you wanna talk about in regard to this advertisement for the city clerk position? Very important position in the city of Shadron and any other community. Normally, we've talked about these things in hourly rate, um, the way that proposed the advertisement is salary range per year salary. Something like twenty-six dollars an hour times two thousand eighty hours, fifty-four dollars an hour a year. So what are your? You know, we, we need to get this going, um, the, the other part of it that, um, was that application packages we accepted until the position was filled, with the intent to begin the review process on or after September twentieth.
So looking back at what the, the salary scale, the, or salary info that, um, that had been sent out, I think the job description looked good. I didn't have any changes to suggest as far as that goes, I think the advertisements, um, is good. Uh, salary scale, I think the average, if you look at that, that's minimum thirty-two, thirty-five. Average maximum forty-four, fifty-four, or if you go medium, thirty-two ninety-nine. Low, minimum hourly to a median max hourly of forty-three, twenty-seven. Is that, not, not a whole lot of difference there. Something like thirty-two, thirty-three dollars minimum to about forty-four dollars maximum. That covers our current, um, our current pay scale, which is thirty-nine ninety-nine to thirty-nine ninety-nine. Uh, that includes that and leaves, um, some ad room for future growth. Obviously, I don't think we'll be starting anybody at the maximum salary.
I, I think some of those, uh, those comparative towns were in eastern Nebraska. Yeah, I think the, the pay rate, the pay scale is probably a little higher than the western Nebraska. So I'd be looking at the pay scale to the comparable towns around here, so I, I'm not sure. I, I think that's maybe a little, little higher.
Yeah, I, I, I would, I would be reluctant to go that high.
In the backup marks with the going eastern, like, I know it was Carney with Max, who's fifty-nine. Um, I mean, Carney's a five times, six times bigger town as we have, which probably is a lot more to do there, a lot more responsibility, so it would probably be higher where our, our town is five thousand.
I guess the info I'm looking at, uh, has Alliance, Cozad, Gary and Gothenburg, Holders, Lexington, McCook, Ogalal, Valentine, Wayne, and York. I think those are all pretty comparable. There's also, there is more down below, outside of our array. But usually when we're looking at our comparables, our comparable array that BEF puts together.
Right.
Their cities are the first class for the most part. Um, I think Valentine might be a second-class city, I don't remember, do you know Donna put up here? So, yeah, they're not, you know, we don't have a, in our comparables here for the, that I'm looking off of, I guess, I'm not seeing Carney, and they're not. When I'm look, if, do you have the front page on that one?
Yeah.
Oh, no, so this is the last.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at this page.
Same as that.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm, that was, that's what I was basing my comments off of, is this, I think that. This was the one that that emailed out.
Right, she, she just emailed that, right.
Yep, that's, that's what I'm, I wasn't going off of the stuff down there. I don't know that we could hire a full bore city clerk for a lot less than thirty-three dollars an hour. But if you wanna set that minimum lower, you know, I think we can make whatever argument.
Well, it'll all boil down to, you know, the applications that we get.
From what I understand, the, the salary range we're discussing is just for what goes into the ad, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, that's correct, yeah, yeah.
So. We're not promising anybody forty-four dollars an hour, we're just saying.
Yeah, yeah.
I was just gonna say that thirty-three to forty-four seems like a nice range.
That would be a lot for the city of Shadron, but it would be a good range. If you're using the average, you're really, you're something in the neighborhood of fifty to seventy or.
The salary range is based on experience.
Yeah.
It should be a slight scale.
That's, that's pretty cheesy though. I think there should be at least something.
Rarely see them with specifics.
I would, I think, I think we should have at least something in there, even if, even if it's twenty-five dollars an hour. Something just really low, I think. Uh, I think it's, I, I, I really recoil from the idea of not having something in there. It's based on experience, because I mean, you have, you have fourteen dollars an hour.
What would, would you have in mind again?
I had, I was thinking of, uh, one of the things that we're working for. The cheek weights out to fifty, from fifty-four thousand to in rounded thirty-seven thousand.
To thirty-four is the highest?
I don't know that we'll get, uh, a lot of good applications, I mean, twenty-six is less than any of these.
Well. Boy, I, I, I really don't anticipate getting a full-blown experienced city.
Yeah, and if, boy, I would love to have a very experienced, very, you know, well-trained city clerk. Uh, and to, to cap that range and say we'll pay no more than thirty-four dollars an hour.
Yeah.
Um, that's a lower maximum than, I mean, that's pretty close to some of the minimums for some of these places.
But, you know, I, I was giving it some thought and said, how many years do you need to be doing the city clerk's job before you probably know ninety-five percent of what's going on? I, I don't know if there's a point where you ever reach a hundred percent of what's going on. Um, you know, my guess is it'd probably take fifteen years to know everything. I, I, I've been a CPA for fifty-plus years, and I still don't know everything, cause they keep changing things. So you have to know.
I, I mean, I agree, I, I still don't know them, everything there is to know out there, either in my, my profession, so.
Yeah.
Most of these are pretty close, about ten dollars for the minimum to the maximum, too, or something.
I don't know, it's like the twelve.
Ten, ten to twelve dollars, yeah.
So there's one that's fourteen. Thirteen.
I think it was me, I'd. Well, at home I kinda thought it out, and I was thinking like twenty-eight, forty.
I mean, eight to forty, I think is reasonable.
But I mean.
Alliance's max is forty. And that leaves our current maximum as it is on our current pay scale. We're just introducing a new minimum.
Alright.
Or you wanna start a little lower and have it less compressed?
That's what I, that's what I was just gonna say is.
Yeah.
Tw- you're twenty-six, I mean.
Twenty-six to forty?
Yeah. You might have a bigger range of.
Yeah.
People that might apply for it, too.
And you wanna just change where we add salary, the wage rate to an hour? The rate might be easier to understand.
Is the position, I know it's like FLSA exam, says it paid on a salary basis, I believe it's paid on a salary basis.
Yeah, it's an exam position.
So. Set, set on a salary, but then divided by the two thousand eighty hours to get an hourly rate.
Yeah. Are other, are, are the other salaried positions advertised on a salary basis or an hourly, on a per-hour basis?
Probably hourly.
Salary.
So. Yeah, I just, I, I, it's finally different version, I think if we're giving twenty-six to forty, then twenty-six times two thousand eighty to forty, times two thousand eighty. A week, forty, forty hours a week.
It is forty hours.
Yeah.
But I'm guessing Donna, if I put in a morning.
I don't know, when was the last time you worked a forty-hour week, Donna, was that like when you worked a three-day week?
Okay, so writing in the figures in, fifty-four thousand eighty to, I didn't get them.
Mark has a calculator.
Eighty-three, two hundred.
Eighty-three, two hundred.
Do you wanna check on that?
I watched, yeah.
Okay.
That's not good. Good.
Do we need that in the form of motion, or? Okay.
Mayor had moved to amend the city clerk advertisement to include a salary range, uh, as discussed.
Okay.
Second that.
Motion by Miles, seconded by Shane, to list the salary range of fifty-four thousand eighty to eighty-three thousand two hundred in that block. So could we have a roll call on the, uh, amend?
Klein?
Yes.
Bannon?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
And then we'll have a motion to advertise. I guess we, we. No, yeah, okay.
Mayor, I would move to approve the job description and advertise the position as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion by Miles, seconded by Mark. Approve the job description and advertise as noted. Could we have a roll call, please?
Klein?
Yes.
Bannon?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Motion, I move to move, approve the claims as presented in our packet.
Second that.
Okay, I made the motion, Mark seconded to approve the claims. Um, discussion items, um, the Bittner Construction, where did this sewer repair happen? I, I'd just like to know this.
That, that happened, um.
That, that happened, um, in the alley on, um.
Chapeau.
Yes, thank you very much.
And I'd just like to point out, um, 'cause when I first saw him, I had to double-check it. But we're putting. Thirty thousand three hundred dollars plus twenty-five hundred dollars in the City of Chatteran's health. Side fund and dental side fund, very similar amounts. We're going to our reinsurance carrier. I think that's how you determine, address them, RCI. So I just wanted to point that out, so. A roll call please, let's have, if someone has any other. Questions. Roll call please.
Klein?
Yes.
Bannon?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
City manager report.
I'll be brief, uh, mayor, uh, one thing we just wanted to report real quick on the online auction. Uh, generated total of about two hundred thousand eight hundred fifty-nine dollars, petition for, uh, Brad Olson. Plus five thousand eighty-six dollars and sixty cents with proceeds of eleven thousand seven hundred seventy-two dollars and forty cents. Came, uh, back to the city for those items that was sold on the online auctions. Um, couple of things that I just wanna mention is that this is something that's a better effective use of our people. Uh, and we, we did learn a few things, uh, that we wanted to make sure that we had some hard firm pickup times. So that we weren't, uh, doing some different things that way. Uh, but it was also something where, uh, the online auction did give us more bidders than you would normally see at one of our other auctions that we've had. Um, and so I think as a, uh, just an update, we will plan on doing another one as we get enough merchandise or enough merchandise. As the surplus items presented to the council. And we're gonna try to do that on a quarterly basis, so it's not gonna be a huge amount, but this will also allow the departments to be able to store that in their locations. As we see things, uh, moving forward, so. At the end of, uh, September, we'll ask everybody to present all of their surplus items, so that when, then the next auctions for the next quarter, we'll be able, we'll be able to proceed with that. Second thing is, is, uh, we did get a, um, report from the, uh, game of parks to begin the memorial park. Uh, res, uh, project in which we're going to be replacing playground equipment. Uh, we will be tearing out the old tennis courts and we will be starting to get that process all moving forward. Now, there are a few things that we have to bid out, such as the playground equipment itself and the concrete work that needs to be done. But one of the things that we have is, is the in-kind donation from the city for producing, uh, or providing some of the labor for a lot of the tear-out stuff. And that the, uh, game of parks is gonna give us some of those things. And then the last thing I just wanna just to stress to everybody as we're getting ready to get into the winter months, making sure that we get the weed, the grasses, tree branches, everything. Take care of, uh, if they have questions on any of that kind of stuff, they can give the city hall comments. We need to have branches ten feet above, especially out in the streets, in the alleys, things like that, around the dumpsters. And if you have a bigger project that, uh, needs a little more help and you don't have the vehicles to do it, I'll remind everybody that we do have the dial truck. That, uh, the phone number is four three two zero five two eight. Um, and that truck can be brought over there to the, the place, place where they need it, they can load it up and, uh, we can get a call-off for them and, and get it taken care of that way. Thank you.
As a, as a reminder, uh, the memorial park project has a hundred and forty thousand dollar grant, is that clear?
It's a hundred and forty thousand dollar grant and then we have a match of a hundred and forty thousand. Then we have a couple of organizations that are doing some dollars and then we're also using some L B A four money along with some money out of reserve to match that fund. Along with our in-kind, uh, monies as well. Yes, so it, it is a total project of a little over two hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Great, we can, uh, at least have a hundred and forty left paid.
Yes.
Okay, I'd make, like to introduce resolution number twenty twenty-four dash seventy-five. To excuse council member, councilman Joe John Drew, he sent me an email along with city staff that. He was sick today, so.
I'll second that.
Motion by me, seconded by Shane to. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventy-five to excuse Joe John Drew. Could I have roll call please?
Klein?
Yes.
Bannon?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Oh boy, council closing comments, I get to go first. I've been voting first. In case you haven't noticed, um, we do take turns of who votes first and. We proceed with the same about council comments. But first of all, Emily and I extend our deepest sympathy to the families and to our community who have lost four of our distinguished current and past community leaders. Marty Caneely, attorney, Dr. Butch Hanlon and Dr. Robert Ponor, who are both medical doctors. And Dr. Bill Winkle, who is a professor and musician. Our community is better for their contribution during the life, during their lives in Chatteran. Uh, Emily and I also went to the annual Heartland Express meeting last week. And we found it very informative and encouraging. It's a long and slow journey to get that going, but, um. Deb Cottier is working with N D, N N, and with, and N N D C works to keep us informed. And I just wanted to, to reiterate the part of Tom's comments about weeds. If you know me, I've pulled my, more than my fair share, but I can't pull them anymore this year because they all have pollen in them. And it gives me terrible allergies, so. So I won't, my offer to come out and help you is revoked. But, but on a positive note, I, I happened to go past one business this weekend and there was some tall weeds growing out by the curb and I. Went and talked to them, but they weren't there and so I had to call them and lo and behold, they cut some of them. So it does work. Don't be afraid if your neighbor doesn't trim his weeds, um, offer to help. But don't ask me to help with my allergies. Miles?
I had, uh, heard that Dr. Bill Winkle passed away, my condolences to his family and, uh. When I was in high school, we had a job shadowing or just a shadowing day, you follow a community member for a day and. Uh, I got to spend a day with Bill Winkle and, um, I don't know that I would've been as involved with music in college as I was without getting to follow him. He was just a, a warm, just nice, kind soul who loved music and you could feel his passion and enthusiasm for it. I really, you know, I, I, he, by the time I got to Chatham State, he had already retired and moved on. Um, but I'll always remember him for, he, just that one day, it made such an impression, such an impression on me. Just to be there with him and to see his care for our community and, um, how everybody in the college community respected him and. How the students, um, really looked up to him, that was wonderful. We're into sick season, school's back in session, my family's been sick, Joe's sick tonight. Uh, wanna encourage everybody, stay home if you're sick, uh, get your flu shot coming up, we've got, uh, new vaccines approved to help with COVID as well, so encourage everybody to go out and get. Get their shots, help support the community, you know, we all rely on each other to look out for one another and. Fellow community member's sick is a great way to help.
Well, it's good to see so many people come to our meetings. It's encouraging to see, uh, community participation in our meetings. Generally, we don't see a lot of that. Um, and we all need to work together to formulate new policies, um, so I'm glad that some people came and so we can hear what they had to say. Uh, and I would encourage anyone that's out there, uh, citizen, that, that has a question or concern to, uh, approach any, any one of us to, to, uh. Voice their concerns because that's what we're here for. We may vote on some things or pass some things that not everyone agrees with, uh, but hopefully we are trying to do, uh, the right thing for, for the community as a whole.
Um, George pointed out about, uh, Dr. Hanlon. Um, I didn't know the others as well, I knew Dr. Hanlon. He was a, uh, he was a kind man, um, cared about everyone, um. Helped out the Boy Scouts, did a lot of community service around the Chatteran area. Um, he's just a, just a good person in general and then I can really love this area, you know, he moved to Omaha. In retirement to be closer to his kids, he, uh, loved Chatteran, loved Crawford, um, loved this whole area. And, uh, condolences to his family as well. And if you've never, uh, been to the Chatteran State football game at night, um, they have another Thursday night game, um. The field looks awesome. It's, looks like something that should be in a big city or something, but if you get a chance to go up there, check it out, it's, it's a fun atmosphere.
Is that this last Thursday they played?
Yeah, and they.
I didn't realize that was the college.
And they play this Thursday, yeah.
Oh, that's awesome.
Okay. Before I'm. Since Shane mentioned when Dr. Hanlon again, I, um. I never had allergies, I lived, uh, in my life and then. Somewhere when Dr. Hanlon was still here, I got into some ragweed about this time of year, it was probably in August and it was just terrible. Out and I, of course. Where Di- where the Hanlins lived on Pine Chris wasn't very far, so I just walked over there and knocked on his door and said, I got this terrible. Eyes were watering and stuff and he, and I don't remember if he gave me a prescription or something, but he. He talked to me on Sunday, which I thought was pretty nice.
Oh, yeah.
So. With that being said, I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second that.
Motion by me, seconded by Shane. Could we have roll call please?
Klein?
Yes.
Bannon?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Thanks again for coming.